Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, May 6th, or excuse me, April 6th, 2021, and I'm called to order the Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please stand if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In our attempt to continue mitigation efforts, we are continuing to offer our board meetings via Zoom due to the COVID pandemic, and we are allowed to do this per code section 21.8.1. With that, I'm asking if there are approval for adoption of today's agenda?
It's been moved. Second?
It's been moved by Merkin and second by Faisal. Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now's the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's anyone from the public who would like to make comments, please raise your hand if you're on via Zoom or hit star nine to unmute yourself. And I don't believe I'm seeing anyone wanting to make public comments, so we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to agency reports. And we have access. Is she on? Why don't we? Was she expecting to be on?
It's part of my information to them is that they're supposed to give, they're supposed to go to the Zoom site. I send it to them and, oh, we have the recording, Mike.
We do have the report. If she comes on, we could certainly go back to this.
Actually, and I do have a couple of questions if she does come up to the call. Not a follow-up individual.
I'll watch for her to join.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we approve the agency report? Or is it just an agency report? Okay, so just keep an eye out for her. Next, we move on to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the March 30th, 2021 minutes? Second. It's been moved by Faisal, seconded by Merkin. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Oh, she did.
Yes.
We'll go back to... Good morning, Teresa. Did we just lose her? Oh, no, there she is.
Good morning.
You're muted.
I am muted. Thank you for rolling with that. I appreciate it. A little bit awkward.
That's okay. So when you have your report here, are there things that you wanted to highlight in your report? And I do know that there's a couple of questions as well.
Great, yeah. No, I mostly wanted to start with a big thank you. I feel like everybody who's in a leadership role in this pandemic just deserves a little bit of kudos. So big thanks to the Board of Supervisors for all that you've done in the last year, in the last few months. It's a lot of work right now. I don't necessarily have any specific things to pull out. I'm highly happy to walk through the report just to acknowledge that we've been open through the pandemic and serving in some pretty alternative ways. A lot of our services have looked like shifting towards video counseling. But one thing that I did want to mention is that we have started to, we've kind of charted our path here in the new calendar year towards stair stepping back into in-person services and just kind of opening up the breadth of services that we have that started actually back previously last calendar year to returning to doing in-person sexual assault exam accompaniment, in-person law enforcement interview accompaniment, and in-person court system accompaniment. Kind of our next phase on the horizon is starting some more one-on-one counseling-style appointments and some in-person community education. So things on the horizon in that respect. And I think we're excited about it. You know, we have, I'm really proud of our team for the variety of new strategies. We have tried to deliver service. I highlighted some of that within the report talking about launching video counseling, launching a chat feature on our website, and also launching virtual support groups. And I've been really amazed by how well-received those are for some survivors. There's definitely a subset in the community that though, that genre of delivering service actually probably is resonating better for a number of reasons. Things like transportation, limitations of getting around the county. I would also say things like they don't need to figure out childcare, you know, some of those sorts of things that make it logistically easier for some survivors. And there's also some survivors we know that's not working for. And so, again, optimistic that as we start to start to do more things in person, we'll just be able to actually better meet the needs of survivors in Story County in the months to come. Definitely been a hard year, and I also am trying to focus on the big lessons we took away from the pandemic. And one is just that we can do some of these services in really different ways. Our housing program, I know I mentioned this in the report as well, that that has been its own challenge in the pandemic. We responded pretty quickly to use some CDC guidelines last spring, so this time last year, and started distancing within our shelter space. I think one thing that is important for folks to know, our shelter is that kind of scattered site, might also think series of apartments, which lent itself well towards the pandemic and response. But previously, we would have doubled up single individual adults into bedrooms. And with the pandemic, we stopped that, paused that. And now currently are having one, we call it household, per bedroom. So they all have their own private space. I use the term household just to mean that, say, a survivor comes in with one child, they might share a bedroom. A lot of our, most of our bedrooms have something like a bunk bed or two individual beds, so it works pretty well. We started to implement using hotels to try to increase our bed count, especially as we started to receive awards around KIRZAC dollars. And then we actually signed an additional lease for an additional apartment unit here in Story County. I would say lots, again, lots of lessons learned. On the one hand, we stayed open, stayed serving this whole time. On the other hand, it has looked much more rigid. I think I undercounted, quite frankly, the importance of flexibility in our bed space in terms of helping survivors move in and out of shelter quickly and serving kind of the breadth of survivors. Our shelter, we aim for an average length of stay of about 30 days. And the way that works or happens is typically actually because the majority of survivors have very short stays, and they move in and out of shelter very quickly. And a handful have longer stays because their barriers, I mean, they need more help, they need more supports. And there's always, always, every year, a handful of folks who need more support and a longer stay. And our shelter is designed for that. It was, it's doing exactly what it's meant to do. However, when you have really rigid bed space, suddenly that becomes a problem. And what we bumped into for part of this last year was bumping into a handful of survivors who needed additional supports and that rigidity of only having such more limited bed space than we did before. So our bed count for Story County specifically has been low for the first part of the fiscal year. As we started to increase use of hotels and increase use of that additional apartment, we've absolutely seen the demand and met much of the demand for Story County just increasing and working really hard to make sure that those beds are available and have seen that start to pivot and work in our way on that. The last thing I just wanted to make sure to highlight, and happy to dig into any other aspect of the report, but wanted to highlight just something that is happening so that everybody is aware. Part of Access's funding, a big portion of our funding comes from something called the Victims of Crime Act. It's federal legislation, and it pulls dollars for victim services across the country in through the prosecution of crimes. There's kind of those fines and penalties. And there's some formula around like how much gets moved over and what gets allocated in grants. But the formula has been a little bit complicated and messy because in recent years, there've been a number of things that have been used, such as, well, just lower prosecution rates, but also delayed judgments that don't populate the fund. And so there's been a decline for some years now in the VOKA funds at the national level. But we're now to a point where kind of the VOKA administrators are kind of really acknowledging an emergency. We were lucky in Iowa, the folks who kind of received those dollars at the state level and then allocate them locally to folks like us, they kind of spread the challenge across the three-year grant-making period. There was actually, oddly enough, one of the years in the grant-making period, there was a spike, an increase in VOKA allocations. But it was a very temporary, and they knew it would be like kind of a one-year spike. So they spread that to help prevent some of the pain of future cuts. But we'll be ending out our three-year contract. And so because of that kind of horizon line, they're really sounding the alarms that there will be, there will be cuts this coming year for us that are not going to be avoided by a change to VOKA. And unless some new legislation to fix the way that VOKA is populated passes, there will be very substantial cuts to come the next fiscal year. Trying to tell that to as many local partners as we can in part because we need local voices to say, hey, we need this fixed, we need this change. And also, just to make you aware, it's the volume. If those cuts became a reality a year and a half, two years from now, it would be substantial enough that we would pretty substantially have to think about our staffing levels because it's a large percentage of our budget. My hope there is momentum around that particular portion of legislation. So just putting out there, if you see information about VOKA and fixing, help us lift that up as a priority to help that move forward. We'll keep you posted. You know, I know that's really important to make sure that you all know what's going on, especially as that kind of, it's all in the mix, right, of what comes into Story County. And as we see that continue to unfold, for better or for worse, we will start to see the information coming. And we'll keep you apprised. I think those are the main, main topics. Again, just to shout out, I, this year has been incredibly challenging, and it's always hard, you know, there's always a burnout factor to delivering support services to survivors. And I'm just so grateful for the Access team because our staff really have through really hard and challenging time, been open and creative and caring folks for survivors to interface with. So super thankful for them and thankful for community partners like you who helped make it all possible.
Thank you for your report. And Supervisor Merkin, I believe you had a couple of questions.
I do have a few. First off, I know that after the courts opened, you still weren't going to court for a while. When did you start attending court hearings again with victims?
Oh, gosh. I apologize, I don't remember the exact date right off the top of my head. There was a period of time in the last, in the fall where we were attempting, lessons learned, attempting to do things virtually and/or through support before and after some hearings. And then I think it was sometime in October, we resumed, we kind of ripped the Band-Aid off and started doing police interview accompaniment, sexual assault accompaniments, and court system accompaniments. What's a little awkward about that is like right about the time that we did that, I think it was like three weeks later, we ended up bumping into a staffing issue where we had so many staff members out because of COVID that we actually had to pause in person again for a week-long period and then resume. So it was a little bit of a start and stop when we launched. And then right about that time, some more portions of the court system pivoted again. So it's a little bit messy, I acknowledge for sure, in that kind of start and stop period.
And I understand that. And I also know the county attorney's office stepped in and helped with services then, and we funded a victim coordinator at that point because we realized that we needed some more of a presence for victims in the courtroom. So I'm glad you're back there. I'd like to shift now to the shelter beds. And I'm, my, my knowledge of access and how you're providing residential beds right now is pretty limited. I remember back when I was on the board, and we still had the shelter. How many, how many separate apartment units do you have right now around Ames?
Yeah, so currently, again, one of these is an additional unit that we just rented because of the pandemic response. We have a duplex that has two kind of sections that kind of function like independent apartments. We have two rented apartments in Ames, and the rented apartment over in Marshalltown.
And how do you staff those?
Yep. So pre-pandemic, we actually had interns that would be there from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM in one of the units. We had one unit that was kind of staffed during that time. Otherwise, it's actually through a system where we have always a staff person on call. So there's always somebody who could respond at a moment's notice. But otherwise, all of the staff are not actually housed in the shelter. But every client is assigned an advocate to work with on their case management. And that's kind of on an appointment basis rather than kind of staffing of the shelter itself. You know, I think if you kind of remember those old days of sheltering where there'd just be somebody kind of who would answer the door, just be available at any, any time in the space because it was all one big shared space. But when they're not shared spaces, it doesn't quite work like that. So we have a team of people who then are assigned advocates and available during business hours. And of course, there's always somebody 24/7 who's in that kind of on-call responsiveness sort of capacity.
I remember the days of shelter, and you had somebody who slept over basically, night staff. And I just wondered if, you know, obviously with scattered sites, you can't do that because that really increases the budget. So when you were talking about possible VOKA fund decreases, I was thinking, was there anything there? But it sounds like you've got a cost-effective way of doing that. Have you had any problems with not having staff on site all the time?
You know, that's actually been really interesting to watch. What's interesting about this particular model is that the vast, not the vast, a portion of what that kind of in-house person used to be doing was a lot of like roommate remediation sort of things. And when folks, when you don't have 16 people sharing a house, but instead they're in separate units, you have a lot less of that kind of conflict to navigate. And the safety and security risks get to be much more personalized and specialized. And so, you know, we get the opportunity, and I mean, we've done this actually recently where a survivor was nervous that they're, that they may have been found. And so we just moved their entire location. And so there's a lot more nimbleness that you can actually meet people's safety concerns in different ways. There's also the, you know, we might be serving a number of survivors at any one time, and they only really know the location of the shelter they're staying. And so that potential for disclosure and anonymity is just much greater. We've, you know, every year, there's a handful of challenges. And that's where, again, singing the praises of our partners, you know, and helping us address those. Most of the things that have risen to where, you know, we provide phones to clients and things like that. So if there's ever a safety, security issue, they can always call 911. If it's something that's more of a, hey, we need some locks changed, we've got floodlights, we've got cameras, things like that, to help them feel like they can kind of control the environment and safety to the best of their ability, as is. But so I would say just generally, the, you know, I've only been with Access, it just got to my three-year mark. And it has been an interesting three years. But my understanding from kind of looking at previous data and what we have now is, we actually have fewer issues with safety, security, and with roommate conflict than we did previous. But the one, I will put one plug in for, I always think it's good to know where our strengths are and where our weaknesses are. Our setup is, works really, really well for domestic abuse survivors and for the vast majority of sexual abuse survivors. With one caveat, I think we have, we've noticed a trend of human trafficking survivors at times struggling. There's some that, just where they are in their journey, it's the right landing space for them. And for others, that unstaffed structure just is not the right fit. And just feeling still concerned and nervous. And so that's something we've been thinking a lot about is, you know, is there a way to adapt something to help make that more responsive to that particular group of survivors' needs? So definitely the work continues.
Is there shelters elsewhere in the state? Like, is there still staffed shelter in DuBois?
There is still, almost everywhere else in the state, it's that kind of big, big, big house frickin' mortar shelters structure. So almost everywhere else, it's structured that way.
So you would have access to maybe for one of those shelters for somebody who didn't do as well in the independent?
Yeah. We've built partnerships with Wings of Refuge and with many other shelters around the state so that some of the strategy really is, how do we get you to the place that fits you best? And, you know, troubleshooting around transportation and problem solving to help get people to the thing that actually feels really supportive.
My final question is regarding what's happening with VOKA. Do you have any bill numbers? Do you have any idea what the timeframe is on that? Do you have any information that might be helpful to somebody who would want to contact the members of Congress or Senate?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me quickly pull it up. I should have this at my fingertips, but I do not. I can quickly follow up around the fix to VOKA. Just want to make sure I get to the correct numbers. And maybe it's something I also follow up with you more directly on.
That would be fine.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. That latter was my question as well. Supervisor Faisal?
Yeah, so, hi Tess, thanks for coming. I know that last year, there were lots of philosophical changes. And I was just wondering if you could talk about where you feel Access's relationship with law enforcement is and how some of those changes are being received? Have things changed a little bit from last year to now as far as where you feel like your relationship is with enforcement now?
That's a great question. And I think what you are alluding to at the state level and nationally, this was a document circulated nationally. Statewide Coalition circulated a document called "The Moment of Truth." It's a, it's a big title. But really what it was pointing out, I would say that that particular document, I think, is complicated and built a lot of challenges with how it was perceived. I think for those who may or may not have seen the document, my take on it, for better or for worse, is I think that the document itself was really meant to be a little bit of a calling to the table of agencies like Access for accountability. You know, we were, our founding is by white feminist leaders. And a lot of our work has included white leadership and how do we make sure that we are accountable to survivors of color? And it lifted up some calls to action from the Black Lives Matter movement and some other movements to really, to really think about, again, if we say, if we're saying we're an anti-violence organization and we care about survivors of color, you know, we need to really think about what that means in action. It was received in a way that I think some law enforcement partners struggled with. And I will acknowledge that our agency is still figuring out, okay, what, what does this letter actually mean for us as an organization? And so we're still chewing on it and wrestling with it. I don't know that there's necessarily quite yet a tangible thing to point to. Though, that document was kind of this big, big community splash. I know that there were some local law enforcement partners who were worried, right? They were worried like, what does this mean for our relationship with Access? Does this mean Access isn't going to work with us? And the answer is no. Our approach to being survivor-driven and led continues. So if a survivor wants to make a report to law enforcement and want support, we want to be there for that. And so that philosophy isn't gone. What I do think as an agency is something that started long before that document is a commitment to equity and inclusion within our services. And years before that, our board set a goal to look at our services and think about them through an equity lens. And that is something we are working on and thinking about, how do we make sure that those that have been marginalized by our system and by other systems, how do we better hear their voices? How do we better serve them? And that, that project is something that is a work in progress. And we'll start to have tangible outcomes for in the months and years ahead. But like, where we are in that process is inventorying. So it's really about information gathering. So we better understand the complexity of our own system and the complexity of what's going on and what survivors are wanting, really, really focusing on hearing survivors. That's where we are in the stage in that process. But I don't think, even with that work, I don't, I don't envision a version of Access where that kind of fundamental value of hearing what survivors want and supporting them and figuring them out, figuring that path out will go away. And because of that, I just never foresee a situation where there won't be some relationship with law enforcement. And so that's, that's a long-winded response to your question, but I hope it kind of helps give, because it's, again, all the big complications of different documents and trying to make sure I'm reading between the lines when you're prompt.
Yeah, okay. I'm glad to hear that, I'm glad to hear you say that because I know, yes, when, when that letter came out, I know, you're right, it set off a lot of warning bells. There's a lot of emotion on all sides. And my concern is people can't be, can't be served if everyone doesn't find a way to work together. I'm glad to hear that you, you do still see some cooperation with law enforcement. Do you feel like your agency's relationship with local law enforcement is still strong? Or you, did that create a rift that you're still trying to heal?
I think it's a work in progress. And I think to just, again, I always appreciate, you know, being forthcoming. I think navigating that particular letter, but also just the, what does it mean? And the, we're still working on that, that there's something dissatisfying, right? About, we want to be intentional about anything we do. And so not having an instant response, I think, was hard on some of our local law enforcement partners. We didn't have an instant response, and it's still a work in progress. So I know that there's some healing on that front. And I think also just acknowledging, this pandemic's been hard. And I, I will say this, as a fairly new leader, we are trying our best to figure out what the best pandemic response is. I think we've gotten some things right. And I think we've gotten some things where we learned, whoops, that is, we tried stuff and they didn't all work. And I think that it's okay to acknowledge, you know, we weren't, you know, clear-fitting about how to do the pandemic response. And I think that that, our pandemic response, has also been hard on some of our partners. And I think that that, our pandemic response has also been hard on some of our partnerships. And there is work to be done in tending those relationships because of that as well. And so there's kind of the layer upon layer that, um, I, I still think we have a great, um, a great relationship. We've got a good foundation and my hope and optimism tells me that, um, a hard year and, um, that we can, we can continue to build through that. And I also, um, I believe, I tend to just believe that people are good and that no matter kind of where this journey around, um, supporting, um, the most marginalized survivors, I think people share that vision with us. And, you know, the, the heartache of that particular letter, I really believe we can have further conversations and say, what is it that, that people really need and move forward on that? So I think there's, I think there's tons of space for commonality. I think there's tending to do. That's the real short answer, should have led with that.
Thank you Tess, I appreciate, I appreciate that and the work that you guys do.
I have a follow-up question on that if I could. I have to admit that I'd not read this statement before, so I just Googled it and I read it. And, um, I'm going to ask you, are local coalitions against domestic violence, I'm sure in the last year they haven't been meeting in person, but are they still in existence?
Varies across our service areas. So there is not a Story County local coalition. The Story County SART DART teams are still very active, um, but not the Story County coalition. Um, and some of the other counties we serve, the local coalitions do exist and still, still have been meeting in some degree and fashion. So there's one over in Marshall County, um, in Green County and in Boone County, but there is not one in Story or Tima.
Very sorry to hear that because I looked at this and my thought was, this is the kind of thing that needs discussion among the parties. And a co, local coalition would be a great place to do that. And the fact that you don't have a coalition here, um, actually being one of the people who spent a lot of years, um, coalition going, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that. I think there's other things the coalition can do as well. And I would encourage you to talk with some folks about getting the coalition going again and having some discussion because I see some things in here that I really honestly think are, are good points. One is the criminal justice has not worked for all victims. We have, we have to acknowledge that. And that's, you know, we have to acknowledge that sometimes there needs to be other ways to work with victims other than the criminal justice system solving that problem, law enforcement solving that problem. And that's not anybody's fault, you know? That's not a finger pointing thing, but that's a thing to have dialogue about, right? So I would encourage you as, you know, as we're able to have more face-to-face, you know, and, and, and I know that's another thing on your plate, but you know, there are partners in the community, I think, who may be willing to work with you to get a coalition going again. And I think that would be a good thing.
I agree.
I think, I think you're spot on. I think, um, many local coalitions have, uh, in recent years, kind of felt like they didn't have their, not their, not their purpose, but it kind of got, um, they kind of lost energy. And I think that this is the kind of conversation that, you're right, community level conversation could be really energizing and super duper valuable. So it is the kind of thing that maybe is coalition building, oddly enough.
A pivotal time.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a pivotal time.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, being third, I don't have any additional questions for you because a couple of my questions have been answered already. I do want to make a comment that, um, I do like the fact that you did the virtual support groups and it sounds like that has been very positive for the folks that you're serving on here. Um, and that, it looks like that you're planning to expand that as well. So, um, I'm sure in person, people would prefer to be in person, but if you're getting a great response this way, I'm glad to see that you're still able to have that connection. And it's going well, it's been responsive.
I, you know, I, I would just put out there for the, for those who haven't facilitated a support group, support groups are actually hard to convene because it requires having the folks who kind of match in the same location, have the same moment. And that's really hard. And I, I think one of the secret recipes for virtual support group success is we're able to have a larger footprint. You know, we can have some places from Story City and from Ames and that, they would not have participated in an in-person support group previously, but now we can pull it off. So I make, I think there's potential. I'm with you. I think there's a ton of potential here.
Great, great. Well, thank you so much for your report. And I will echo Supervisor Merkin in that you get that bill number to let us, to let us know.
Will do.
All right, thank you. Thank you Tess.
Thanks.
Moving on, uh, next up, we have consideration of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Minutes.
Here I did the minutes.
Personnel action.
Yeah, we did the minutes.
And then she came on. Okay, personnel actions, yeah.
Yeah, we're at personnel action.
I move approval.
Second. Been moved by Merkin, second by Fable. Merkin?
Aye.
Fable?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. Consent agenda, does anyone tell me anything on the consent agenda? Yep, I'm not either. There are motions to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Fable, seconded by Merkin. Fable?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. Okay, we do not have a public hearing. Additional items. Supervisor Merkin?
Okay, ever since I've been on, on the board supervisors, we've had three, all three supervisors interviewing, um, all applicants for boards and commissions, but the, the process has been chairperson makes, makes the, um, recommendation and then it goes on the agenda. I've found that increasingly, not that I don't enjoy interviewing people and meeting people and thinking about how, how good they could be on a board or commission, but, um, I just found it, um, kind of onerous both for staff and for our applicants that we have to have three interviews in plenty of time, three interviews back to back, taking that much time. And the last one that I particularly heard, people who sat in on all the interviews say, you're all asking the same questions, you know? And I think our applicants have been very patient with us throughout the process. But I've been thinking for several months now that we could clean this up. We could do a better job and we could, you know, share the work and not have all three of us interviewing, you know, doing this serial interviewing kind of thing. So what I put together, would, would, um, was attached to the agenda and I did attract changes, versions, you can see what the changes are. The big change is really that we could decide among ourselves, okay, we've got an opening for, uh, somebody on, say Veterans Fair, we just recently did, who would like to be the leader, be the interviewer, lead interviewer for that? And then that person, and it doesn't always have to be the chair, it can be who, you know, we can pass that around, share the work. And then that person would be the one who would interview the applicants for that position on the, a board or commission. And then they would put the item on the agenda for discussion. It doesn't mean if other supervisors didn't want to be involved in the interviewing that they couldn't, but I think we basically, um, have all had experience in this and can kind of trust each other's judgment. I think it's more efficient. I think it, you know, I think it would be a more effective process. So if you have any questions about what I proposed, and I did run it by our Director of Internal Operations and External Operations and for their input as well. And I think I got all your, Sandra and Alyssa, I think I've got all your concerns. If there's anything else you can see, I'd appreciate hearing from you, but.
I think this was a good thing that you put together. Two questions that I've had for you. So I, I understand the lead, so, um, but I didn't see anywhere that said that, and maybe I just read over it, that if decided lead, another supervisor or two other supervisors wanted to interview that person, that that was allowed?
Look at the bottom of the first page, the last paragraph. All three supervisors will have the option to interview applicants separately.
Oh, okay, okay. The three just got.
Super, yeah. So we would, it would just be, the lead interviewer would be the person, it might be the sole interviewer. So that would be the person who has the responsibility of doing it. But if another supervisor wants to exercise the option of doing interviews as well, they may.
Yeah, no, that's good. I just misread it with all the red in there.
Oh, no, I thought, accepting changes and I thought, well, then there'd be two documents, so.
Um, and then on page two, and again, it may just be how I'm reading it. It, um, the sentence that says for asset interviews, the director will be the second interviewer, which I understand that. And then it says the director will arrange for second interviews if another supervisor, supervisor wishes to interview the applicant. So the director would be the external, correct?
Yes.
Is the plan there? And so if, if, they will do the, if, I guess I'm just trying to think of the process of how that goes. So does the director themselves just do the interviews and then we're having a super?
The director will be the second interviewer. The director would interview with the lead interviewer because the director of external operations has, has, you know, a big role in assets. So I thought it would make sense for that position to be, because we're never going to just interview alone, there's always going to be a second interviewer. So I'm saying for asset, the director of external operations would be the second interviewer.
Okay, okay. So you specified that, that has to be that person?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. That's where it was unclear. Okay, that was just my key question.
Okay.
But Chief, did you have any thoughts?
I, I don't have any, any questions. I'm glad that, I, I appreciate you bringing this forward because I, this was my first time doing these interviews and it, it really felt like quite a lot to ask people to, um, to, to go through and, um, that they were all very generous with their time. But I agree, it, it felt like we could be doing this a little bit differently.
And it doesn't take away the option if all of yous want to interview, it just kind of cleans it up to say, gosh, we only need one to make that recommendation, but if more than one wants to, they needed that as well.
Right. Because we want to make the process for people easier, not, not more difficult. We want more people to be, um, applying to be on boards and commissions. So, yeah, I like this a lot.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I move approval of the revised procedures for boards and commission appointments.
I would second that. Been moved by Merkin and seconded by Fable. Merkin?
Aye.
Fable?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. Thank you Supervisor Merkin, you worked on that.
Sure.
Next, we have departmental report from planning and development and I believe it's Amelia.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
I will share my screen here and we can go through the PowerPoint that I prepared. It's pretty brief. So please stop me if you've got any questions during the slides. So this is our first quarter report. We've seen a lot of permit activity. That is, um, pretty unique for a first quarter. I think part of it could be still, folks are at home finding projects to work on, that kind of thing. But I have recently heard from several applicants that part of it too is there's a concern that lumber prices and building material prices are going to continue to increase. And so I, I, the weather's better, you know, folks are really getting a start on building this year, um, I think based on that concern about lumber prices. We've seen a lot, it's not necessarily very high for single-family dwellings. You know, that's pretty average still, um, typical of other years, you know, especially 2017. But smaller accessory structures, additions, we've seen a large increase in this quarter. And this is really typical of what we would see in a second or third quarter of the year, you know, spring, more spring and summer numbers. Are there any questions on these trends?
You're saying that thirty-two other, most of those were accessory?
Yes, whole barns, um, commercial permits, additions to dwellings, yes, solar arrays.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's pretty surprising how many we've seen.
And the average dwelling value going up from mid-two hundreds to three hundred and two thousand?
Yes, so the, the valuation of dwellings that we're seeing has really increased as well this quarter. I'm curious if that will be a trend for the rest of the year. You know, and I don't have any data necessarily to back this up, but just my thought with, you know, the, the trend of building materials increasing, houses can now cost, you know, twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars more than they might have otherwise, um, when lumber prices were lower. So, you know, potentially we're now seeing just these, you know, um, larger homes being built versus, you know, the smaller ones where, you know, that lumber price, construction cost prices going up might make more of a difference. That, that's kind of my hunch.
Yeah, I was wondering if it was the lumber prices and all of, you know, other prices or if it was that people were building bigger homes? And you're saying your hunch is it's a combination?
Yes, yes. And the valuation doesn't look at the lumber prices. So the valuation we use is just on, based on the square footage of the different, um, parts of the home. So how big the garage is, how big this, um, floor area is, if there's porches and decks and that kind of thing. So the, the valuation wouldn't fluctuate with lumber prices, but I'm just thinking, you know, the types of housing, houses we're seeing, the increase might not matter as much, um, to the folks who have, you know, continued to build houses at this point. But we'll be monitoring that trend because I'm really interested in how this is going to impact, you know, the affordability of building. And this is a map of where we've seen all those permits. So it's pretty, you know, dispersed around the county, mainly though, north of Ames and north of Hoxley, north of Maxwell areas. Our development cases have been a little bit lower, um, which honestly is probably good given the number of permits we've seen. And I will say that, you know, 2021, um, we've seen a lot of site development plans, which are the equivalent of commercial building peer, um, permits. That's pretty high, closer to 2017 and 2018 levels. And so again, we've seen a lot of more commercial permits this quarter than we normally would. Those have mainly been key co-op, has had two commercial site plans, um, because of the derecho damage. So that could be part of this too. You know, a lot of folks have sustained storm damage and are now rebuilding at this point. But otherwise, we've seen, you know, about the same number of conceptual reviews and other requests. And I didn't include on here, we have, have had two annexation requests before you all and one was an Ames urban fringe plan amendment. We don't typically track those with our other permits, so I didn't have numbers from other years to compare those with because we don't usually see that many. You know, in just the last calendar year, 2020, we had one annexation request. So to have two in one quarter is pretty high. Questions on development case trends? Upcoming. In this next quarter, we will have a few development cases before you all. We'll have a floodplain ordinance amendment. And then there will be two more annexation requests, one for the Verbio property, um, into the city of Nevada and one for a Flummerfelt owned property. It is just to the west of Ames, um, near the old Crestview site. And, and we can talk about that more. I'll, I'll be sending an email update about those after this, but just looking forward for what's coming to you all next quarter. And then on our work program, so this, I've, I've circled the high priority items and I'm going to give an update on those. Ames urban fringe plan, we haven't started work on that yet. You know, when we added this work program item, it was noted that Ames really wanted to dig into this after the adoption of their 2040 plan, so we're still waiting on that. Construction and demolition landfill siting only. We have a letter to property owners regarding the potential interest in working with the county to buy a piece of property on the planning and zoning April agenda. So that'll come to you all after, um, Planning and Zoning Commission looks at that and we talk to them further about options on that site. We're continuing our overall review of the land development regulation. Um, we're continuing our overall review of the land development regulations. We've taken one chapter to Planning and Zoning Commission so far and have two more on the April agenda. So we're pretty on track with that. And then our natural resources layer mapping. So again, we're updating and creating a more accurate natural resources layer from our C2C plan. Um, we've completed the mapping on that. And you know, it's coming at a time where we're almost done with drafting new standards to protect sensitive environmental areas in the county. And so it would be really good if we could coordinate the outreach on those two things. So when we, you know, send notice to um property owners that, hey, you've got natural resources lay on your property, those areas, the mapping will be changing, but also we're going to have new standards. I think those two would be good to do outreach on at the same time. Um, and again, the conservation design standards, sensitive environmental areas regulation review is almost completed. Um, and so then we'll get that to county departments to review and then we'll do the public outreach aspect on that. And then our public outreach toolkit item, again, we're going to be piloting some workshops with our natural resources area mapping and the sensitive environmental areas regulation review. And we also, um, as part of conceptual review, I've asked um one applicant who will be submitting an application sometime in the future um to kind of pilot a workshop before they make a formal submittal with neighbors. Um, so we will see how that goes. Um, we also discussed notification distances for conditional use permits at our March Board of Adjustment Meeting to get their input. And they had some thoughts on what types of conditional use permits they've seen could use greater notification distances and brought up the idea of using signs placed on the property like we do for rezonings to ensure that neighbors are notified. Um, so that might cut down on some notification costs. And then our final high priority item is our minimum levels of service work program item. And that will be assigned to our new planner who starts on April 12th, so next week. Um, and other than that, our department has been working um with Supervisor Merkin and Leeann Harder and Nick Sorensen with uh from the Chamber on the broadband survey. And so I put a plug in my um department on our quarterly report to go take the survey, take it on your home internet or business internet. There's a business and home survey. Um, there's a speed test and we really are working to get the word out on that and make sure we get some good data that we can use going forward for grants and other opportunities to expand broadband access in Story County. Any questions?
Any question? I love the idea of the sign, placing a sign on the property.
Yeah, that is a good idea. I I appreciated that feedback too. And we did actually budget for some more signs. So I think that's something we will be able to make happen.
I think that's great. That's great. So it'll be interesting to see with the next quarter, your what your permit trends, if they continue to increase or if they start leveling off or what that trend will be.
I'm very interested as well. I'm I'm hoping, um, you know, that we start to see some more normalcy in that trend. That spike is a little bit, I I'd like to know more details on. And maybe we're going to start asking applicants, you know, what's prompting you to apply now.
Do you know other counties are also seeing that same type of trend?
I'm not sure, but I could reach out to our listserv of county zoning officials and ask before the next quarterly report if we're still seeing this trend. I'm curious.
Yeah, I was just just curious if that's kind of a statewide, if it's unique to our area.
You might want to consider if that other that other category is getting so high to consider breaking, if there's a couple of categories you could break that into.
Sure. Yeah. We can do that. Um, one category that I really find interesting in that that's part of that other category is solar arrays. And I feel like over the past couple of years, we've really seen an increase in the number of those. So I'd be interested to break those out and take a look at, you know, how many more installs we've seen.
Nothing else. All right. Thank you so much for your report today.
Thank you.
We don't have any other report upcoming agenda items. Not necessarily. Um, we'll open up for public forum number two. Comments from the public um may speak on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meeting clause, but may do so in the future. We'll open public forum two. If anyone would like to make a comment, if they're on Zoom, to please hit the raise hand function or hit star nine to unmute yourself. And I am not seeing anyone unmuting themselves or raising their hand. So we will close public forum number two. Um, moving on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements. You'd like to start?
Well, that, um, let's see, we have CCMT meeting tomorrow. There's also a NICO call, you know, National Association of Counties on some federal funding issues, I think. I'm going to try to be on that. Um, CCMT tomorrow. And then I've got a couple more broadband meetings yet this week. And um, we have uh Community Services and Veterans Affairs recognition Friday morning. I think that's probably going to do my week. And then Monday we have um a meeting with HERDA, just an educational meeting.
Right.
And our Conservation Board Monday night. So that's the rest of the week till next next Tuesday.
Yeah, I've got a lot of those same things on my calendar. Um, I was gonna try and hop on the um Story County Transportation Collaboration and just listen in. Um, I've got Leadership Nevada on Thursday. That's pretty much all day long um on Thursday. And then on Monday, I've got OBE task force meeting, the HERDA workshop, Boost Board meeting. Oh, I have DECAT this Friday.
I have a Board of Health is meeting this afternoon at two. Um, if I if we're done, depending on time, I might jump onto uh HERDA's doing a ISU MBA project presentation. So for members, um, I believe it was to ISU extension, so that may be something that I hop on to, but that's also something they will be pre presenting to the HERDA board in the next month. So it's not an urgency to see, it was just an FYI to if I had time to do that. Uh, tomorrow besides CCMT, I have a Children's Mental Health Advisory meeting at noon and then the Story County Transportation meeting as well in the afternoon. Uh, Thursday afternoon, um, I'm joining in with the the um group that's starting to do some of the interviews for the city assessor, the Ames City Assessor, and that small committee that then recommends to the large larger committee. So those are taking place in the afternoon and out. So I will actually be over at Ames in the afternoon on Thursday. Um, I have an Economic Development Executive Committee meeting Friday at 7:00 AM and then a Community Services meeting um at eight as well for this week. So we're all pretty busy. And if there is nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, um, I I did want to just acknowledge the um auditor's report that the state auditor's report that came in a couple of weeks ago and um just acknowledge the um great job that our auditors office and our chairships office are doing. A really good report and appreciate their work.
Yes, I would concur. There was actually a note on here for to kind of mention that. And uh, nice thing, the positive reports that comes out. Um, and really it just shows the dedication of the staff that we have here in Story County.
Indeed. With that, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I would adjourn.
My second motion.
Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, I wanted to just mention.